So is Jessica our host tonight?
I am.
Okay, so I got six thirty, so we'll be starting in a minute if you're ready, okay? All right, thank you. Okay, good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Monday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. The first matter on the agenda this evening is the minutes for approval of the March first, twenty twenty-one meeting. I did speak with Fran about a week or so ago on a couple places on the minutes. It mentions Ah Linahan, and on those spots it should be Ah Lockhart. It's on, I think, a couple of the pages. Besides that, I have no other amendments. Any of the other board members have any directions or comments on the minute? People hear me okay?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the amendments that you had alluded to.
Yeah, just a few places, it should be Richard, but it has Ah for Linahan, and I think two or three places, and Fran said that she would change it. So we do have a motion on the floor, do we have a second for the minute?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made, all in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes yes, so the minutes are approved as amended. Moving along tonight, we do have a public hearing for a special permit on thirty-two Warmusett Street. The applicant is seeking to renovate the existing building at the above address into a three-unit residential structure. The building currently has two residential units. The subject property is located in traditional multifamily zoning district and requires special permit approval per Article twelve, one, C, to expand a residential structure to three dwelling units. A variance per Section six, one for relief from off-street parking requirement, and a variance per Section five point one for minimum open space per dwelling unit, minimum lot size, minimum frontage, minimum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback, minimum rear yard setback, and minimum lot area per dwelling unit, and any other relief that is required on the Lowell zoning ordinance. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is John Geary of the offices of Geary Geary LLP, thirty-two Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing Mr. Ryan Osler. He is the applicant and owner of thirty-two Warmusett Street. Mr. Osler is a Lowell police officer, and he just started a new position within the department. So unfortunately, he cannot be here tonight, but nonetheless, we are ready and willing to see. So as the chairman mentioned, the application involves a request for a special permit pursuant to Section twelve of the City of Lowell zoning ordinance. Thirty-two Warmusett Street is a three-story dwelling, residential dwelling containing approximately two thousand five hundred and ninety-three square feet of land. The property is located, as you've mentioned, in the traditional neighborhood multifamily zoning district. The neighborhood consists of a mix of single, two, and multifamily properties with, as well as small businesses which service and support that neighborhood. I've provided the board with a copy of the floor plans and the site plan for the property. In addition to the request for the special permit from this board, I was before the zoning board of appeals last Monday evening for requests for the variances for dimensional relief and parking. Those requests were approved with unanimous consent of the board with a couple of conditions. The first condition required that my client remove any pervious pavement in the backyard of the property and replace with, I'm sorry, remove the impervious pavement and replace with pervious pavement such as pavers or pervious asphalt. My client has agreed to do that, and if approved here, we will carry that out. The second condition was that my client work with the building department in order to come up to code with any safety issues associated with the property. My client has been working with Commissioner Fuller's office, and he intends to do that. The current layout of the property consists of one unit per floor, so the first and second floor are identical. They both consist of three bedrooms and one bath. The third floor consists of two bedrooms and one bath. Based upon what we can determine from the records of this property, it would appear that the property was a three-family for many years prior to nineteen ninety-seven. But in nineteen ninety-seven, for some reason, the then-owner of the property converted the property from a legal three-family to a two-family. I'm guessing that had something to do with tax revenue or tax, real estate taxes on the property, but we really have no idea knowing whether that was the case or not. But I can tell you, the property has been maintained as a three-family all along, and it currently has three tenants on each, a tenant on each floor. Mr. Osler purchased the property back on September twenty-seventh, nineteen, two thousand nineteen. At that time, he purchased the property as a, what he thought was a three-family, paid a three-family value for the property. But Mr. Osler recently had a storage backup into the basement of this property, and as a result of that incident, the building department, the building commissioner's office was involved, they came over, inspected the property, and they informed Mr. Osler that he actually had a legal two-family, not a three-family. And they suggested to him that he go through this formal process to convert from a two to a three, and that's why we're here tonight. So since that time, Mr. Osler has been working closely with Commissioner Fuller's office with regard to the legal status of the property. I've included a letter from Jose Negron, the local building inspector for that neighborhood, that provides some history on the property and supports the applicant's petition to convert from a, from a two-family to a three-family. The criteria, as you all know, for issuance of a special permit requires that this board make a determination that the adverse effects of the proposal do not outweigh the beneficial impacts of the neighborhood to the city and to the neighborhood in particular. So there are six factors that we look at. The first factor considers the social, economic, and community needs which are served by the proposal. I would suggest converting the legal use of the subject property from a legal two-family to a legal three-family is in line with and promotes the city's master plan and sustainable Lowell twenty twenty-five plan by allowing that additional market rate unit to exist as it does now. The second factor considers the traffic flow and safety, including parking. There are a total of eight bedrooms in the three units, so the code would dictate that the applicant have six off-street parking spaces. In this case, we have three dimensionally non-compliant parking spaces in the driveway. In addition, in addition to those three parking spaces, the applicant has a city's Lowell parking decal in front of the property that acts as an additional parking space. We know that parking space can't be counted to offset the parking requirements, but it is a parking space and it's used by the tenants. As I mentioned earlier, the ZBA approved the parking variance. And I would suggest that since the property has been operating as a three-family for many years, there would be no additional impact to traffic or parking along Warmusett Street and the neighborhood in general. The third factor considers adequacy of utility. Property has all adequate utilities and services running to it, and in fact, the applicant just replaced the sewer line from the street leading into the property as a result of the failure and the reason why we're here today. The fourth factor considers the neighborhood character and social structure. So considering that the subject property has existed as it is for many years, is very consistent with the character of the neighborhood and the social structure associated with the neighborhood. The fifth factor considers the impacts on natural environments. By, by my client implementing the zoning board's condition that the applicant convert the existing backyard impervious material to pervious material, we will allow for some stormwater runoff to remain on the site, which is not the case now, so that will naturally impact the benefit the natural environment property to some degree. And the sixth factor considers the potential fiscal impact. So allowing the property to exist as a legal three-family dwelling will enable the city to assess the property as a three-family, which will add to the city tax revenue base. And there's no additional impact on city services in this case, as the property has been operating as a three-family for many years. So for those reasons, we believe that we meet the criteria for issuance of the special permit and ask the board for its approval. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to present on behalf of my client, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board members may have or the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Gary. So at this point in time, I'm going to open up the meeting to the public. Anybody this evening like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody like to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? And hearing none at this time, anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition, hearing none at this time? I'll turn it over to any of the board members if they have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may?
Mr. Vichette?
Mr. Geary, I think you covered pretty much the criteria on what we're looking for. I think it's a very unique, a unique situation in the sense that I was looking at the zoning and looking at the existing conditions and looking at the maps that you had provided showing the various multifamilies in the neighborhood, and then you look at the dimensional table, and I'm not necessarily sure when that was designated TMF, if that really adequately identified the existing housing stock there. So it is kind of interesting, because in order to make that a three-family, you'd need a twelve-thousand-square-foot lot, which is larger than the suburban, single-family lots in the city's zoning code. So it's just, somehow there seems to be a mismatch there, but that's beyond this particular petition, but obviously, that's, that's kind of a unique situation. The, one of the things I was wondering as well, where it has been maintained as a three-family, if in fact, any of the abuttes would have been here at this public hearing this evening, given the fact that the mailing went out and there was a notice in case there had been any issues with with the congestion. I mean, I certainly took a ride by there, and I couldn't even find a place to pull over, and you know, it really is a congested neighborhood, there's no question about that. Actually, it's a bonus that it does have a driveway. You know, even though it may not meet the dimensional requirements of the parking, there's still, there's still some off-street parking with the property. The, certainly, I think it's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Certainly, density is an issue over there, but understanding that that is out of the character of that neighborhood as far as walkability and and again, the neighborhood has changed over time. At one time, and I personally knew families that lived there that didn't own automobiles, and they worked at nearby places of employment, and they were able to do their groceries nearby and live their lives there, so. But there is access to public transportation, and certainly, there are some other alternatives. There is no exterior work being done to the building. I think the, you know, the increase of the pervious surface is a, is a good thing, or putting some in. And then also upgrading the property from a code perspective, I think is, is a safety issue that benefits the surrounding properties as well, the abutting property. So I have mixed feelings with the density, but certainly understand the challenge. And, and given the fact that that, there really is no change that's going to be done, physical change to this building. It has been operating, there's nobody here this evening with any complaints or concerns from the immediate neighborhood as a result of that. I certainly, Mr. Chairman, I think Attorney Gary has adequately addressed the criteria that we lay out for special permits, so I'm no further comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vichette. Any other board members?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Mr. Lockhart?
I just want to confirm the number of bedrooms that you have. Did you say eight?
I did say eight, Mr. Lockhart. You're probably referring to the comments from the, from the staff, so they were, the comments came out, they referenced six, six bedrooms, but there are eight. And if you notice in my narrative, I indicate there are eight from the get-go. So that was just a typo, I think. There are eight, eight bedrooms.
All right, just to confirm, okay. That's what I thought you had said. And the only other question I have is relative to the site plan shows two different types of fencing on the property.
Right. I can address that for you. So the, the only fence associated with this property is the, is the wooden fence, which runs from the back southeast corner of the property, angling out towards northwest corner of the property and back to the, back to the corner of the house. The chain link fence that's depicted in the comments is the neighbor's property. So my client intends to maintain his wooden fence, the other fence is clearly the neighbor's property, neighbor's fence.
Yeah, okay. And there was a question about a tree in the backyard?
There is, there's a tree that shadows the property line, so that will continue to exist and be maintained.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Any other board members, comments?
All of my questions have been answered, and I agree with Jerry's comments, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Russell, any comments?
No, well, I was hoping for one clarification, so the applicant's proposing three residential units with eight bedrooms combined amongst those three residential units?
Yes, so first and second floor each have three bedrooms, the third floor has two bedrooms, existing.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, no, no further questions, thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. So Attorney Gary, first of all, when I was out doing my site visits, I didn't have the benefit of reading your narratives. So when I went and looked at it, and just looking at our agenda, when I said, when I said I didn't want to renovate a two-family to a three, and I get there and I see the three mailboxes, I see three or four electrical units, and I see trash for three or four units, and I'm like, oh man, but this stuff is already here. And then, obviously, then I did the follow-up, and I went back and read things, because a lot of times in the city, if I'm in a certain neighborhood, we have a matter coming up on the planning board, and I'll spend a little extra time in that neighborhood, take a peek. And then after reading the history of it, I understand why that was all there and what situation you're in. But the only question I have, is there a plan on how people do, use the parking in that stack, stacked driveway? Or in the one in the street, or is it, how do they move people in and out, or how they, I'm sure they've been surviving over the last couple of years or so?
It's existed as it is for quite some time. The, there are four cars associated with this property right now at the present time, so. You know, there is really no scheme to how they do it in the driveway. One tenant does use that decal parking spot in front of the house, but they've worked it out, and it, my client, I asked my client if there have been any issues with, you know, amongst the tenants, and he said everything's been very smooth since he's been there, all good tenants.
You're lucky to have good tenants, then, because I can understand a situation like that, especially with people different work schedules coming and going, other times, move your client, me, and all that, but, okay. I think that was the only question I had, I know you received a leave from the ZBA. Yeah, that was the only one I had. Thank you. Any of the board members have any follow-ups?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add that in our packet, we did have a letter of basically support from the planning, from the, I'm sorry, the building department, and also our comment letter from DPD also as well. I think everybody seeing it, you know, based on what was presented, and that the proposal is, is something that is consistent with the neighborhood.
Yes, I agree, I did read those letters that indicated, you know, the one from the building commission was very important to read, how they walked the, walked the, inside the building, went through all the floors, looked everything over. And I think Attorney Gary, that he wanted them to, to do some fire preventive work to help that things be maintained in the building?
That's correct, that's the, the comments from the, from Commissioner Fuller's office were regarding safety. So my client has been working very closely with his office and Inspector Negron, and intends to do whatever they need him to do.
Good. Anything further, Jerry, on that, or?
No, that's, yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so if the board members have, don't have any further questions, what's the wish of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit, and I would just incorporate the conditions from the zoning board of appeals, which is the applicant shall remove the impervious material at the rear of the site and replace, replace it with pervious surface, and the applicant shall work with the building department to improve the structure to meet the current city.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and it's second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair vote yes? Any hearing, any opposition? Hearing none? The special permit is approved, five in favor, none against. Attorney Gary, if you could, could you congratulate your brother for me on his newly judgeship?
I will, thank you very much.
You know, I worked there for many years, and I saw your brother near, a lot of times, and we're gonna miss him, not coming before the board, but I know he's not allowed to do that, as the judge, but I know they don't keep him in Lowell to start, they move him all around, and then, then he'll be in Lowell eventually, but a lot of, a lot of judges like to come to Lowell when I was here with my ten years, because they said a lot, a lot of things happen in Lowell, and a lot of judges learn a lot of things in Lowell.
He can't wait to get into the new courthouse.
Yes, so tell him, congratulations on my behalf as well as the board, I'm sure, and we're gonna miss him. He always did a good job with the ZBA, and he was always a gentleman and prepared like yourself when he came forward, so, thank you.
Great, I appreciate the thought.
Passing that on to him.
I will pass that on, thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. And moving along on the agenda, we have a tree preservation ordinance update. Staff to update the planning board on the proposed changes to the tree preservation ordinance. Some of the board members who recall, I couldn't help but think about prior chairman, chairman on the planning board, Mrs. R. Rollis, when I was reading this about the trees. I think Jerry and Richard will appreciate what I'm talking about. I've been serving Mrs. R. Rollis for many years. As he used to call it, the tree huggers.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna make comments too about putting trees in. I just go to hell and laugh reading it, I'm saying George would definitely have something to say about this. Not saying it negatively, like, don't get me wrong, but yeah, he obviously had a comment about trees one way or another. Don't the board have any discussion with this, or do you have any proposed amendments, any comments they want to do, or anything further that we can change? So I think, Jessica, whether, this goes before the council, right, after it's done with us?
I can jump in.
Oh, that's Fran, yeah, okay.
Yes, so, right now, the, our tree warden is the, I forget what her title is.
Well, we've been dealing with Ms. Clancy in the past.
Yeah, it's Christine Clancy, so the, the DPW commissioner, that's her title, I blink for a second. So she is the tree warden, and she's looked over the ordinance, the manager has looked over the ordinance. And right now, Christine Clancy is combing through the ordinance to see if there are any other changes that she'd like to propose, just in general, because it's been a while since we've revisited the tree ordinance, and there are some, some other aspects of it that should be updated. And then we also need to ensure that there is enough funding in place to support this proposed change, because right, the proposal, it increases the number, or doubles the number of trees that are replanted compared to what we have now for those that range between eight and twenty-four. So anything that is over eight inches but less than twenty-four inches, instead of planting one tree, it would be two. And I guess, according to Christine Clancy, the majority of trees that are cut down in the city fall within that range, so it would double the number of trees that we are planting. And I think already, they kind of struggle with the to, both the funding and the labor of replacing trees, and like she said before, identifying sites for the, the trees that they can go back in within the same neighborhood. So she just needs to make sure that they will, from a staffing and money standpoint, be able to accommodate these changes. So this is what we think it will be, but I just wanted to provide you all with an update, because I know it's been a while, and we haven't, I guess, updated you in a while, so this is what we have so far.
Do the board members have any questions or comments about this proposed amendment?
Yeah, I think it's an important step forward to really strengthen this ordinance. It's a necessary thing, and I guess there's more worth, more information forthcoming. Is that correct?
Yes, eventually, we will have a draft of our actual revisions. So tracking the revisions within the actual code itself, that will include these changes, and also other updates that bring our tree ordinance more in line with what we're actually doing in the city.
Okay, good, yeah, I think that's a good step forward.
Shouldn't I, I believe, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Fran and her team for putting this together. I think that it'll give me a little bit more confidence when we're reviewing those trees that are being taken out, especially increasing kind of the robustness of the replacement for those trees. I know, you know, taking down a twenty-inch tree and replacing it with a two-and-a-half-inch tree just always felt a little, like, not enough, so I was really happy to see the changes, so I just wanted to thank you for looking at it and pulling it a little bit more in line with surrounding towns and cities. So thank you, I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Any other board members comment on the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, if I just may, I like the results, but I, I have to say, when I did read it, exactly what Fran commented on is, is what I thought of, is you know, as they say, where the rubber hits the road, is the desired result, but there's a cost that goes along with it. I suspect that's going to be where the council has to weigh in on, on, on all of that as well, as far as what the final version is gonna look like. I mean, it's obviously, if, if, if we comment from just what is the desired result you'd like to see, I think this falls in line with that. And then hopefully, we can come up from a practical sense, what will get us there. Again, I appreciate everybody's work on this, because I know we were looking for, for some guidance and some, some, some changes to this, so. Very much needed and appreciated, thank you.
Very much needed and appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, anybody else?
Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to. Yeah, I just wanted to add that I think it gives us the sort of desired result that we're looking for where we're doing more replacement of trees if we're. Taking out larger ones like Mike Sinead said. I think too, I might potentially if we're going for this is what we want, we want more replacement of. Larger number or a larger number of trees installed for for taking out. Larger caliber trees, it may change the calculus for when we are doing tree removal because we have to think about. What it costs to replace too, so I think this ordinance will get us to what we would like to do, we'll see, we'll just have to see what the city council.
Thank you. Fran and Jessica, is this something that requires a motion for us or is this just an update for us or?
This is just informational.
Okay, okay, I didn't know if you needed any approval by us or just pass along to give us the info, okay? All right, so that's informational, yeah, I imagine I can see where, you know, something like this comes along and say, you know. You know, some caveat in there depending upon approval by the city council, the tree warding for funding or something of that nature, but that. Would be a little bit more outside of our scope of as planners, I believe, and the financial aspect of it, financial. Besides that, I think it could be a good ordinance as well, yeah. Okay, moving along, do we have any further comments from any of the board members?
The historic board did not meet last week, no public hearing scheduled, our next meeting is a week from tonight.
Anybody else have any updates? Any updates from staff? Okay, no further updates.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just.
Absolutely, Jerry.
Briefly here, at the MCOG meeting on this coming Wednesday night. There will be some. Discussion again for everybody to. Realize that the recent economic development bill signed was signed by Governor Baker, which included. Some changes to chapter 40A. And which reduces the required supermajority vote for any zoning bylaw. Changes in amendment to a simple majority for certain zoning measures and actions. So we're going to be discussing that and whether or not we actually have. Someone from the administration speak to them regarding this, I. I think I've made it very clear all along, I was concerned about. And I have to look at what was passed, but certainly a city such as Lowell. Where, you know, we have the diverse housing, we have, we just talked about very dense neighborhood. We have a. And I we have a nine-member body that votes on zoning changes. And so you know, supermajority vote is not all that difficult to get if you have a a good proposal. And I understand they're trying to address it when you've got towns that need a town town meeting. You know, supermajority of town meeting, the chain zoning, very difficult. And I understand what they're trying to address, but I was always concerned with unintended consequences. Of of say municipality like the city of Lowell where, quite frankly, and being honest, I mean, if it's somebody that. That can get their votes with just a simple majority, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be the best proposal, I think a supermajority, you know, if you get it, you know. You'll get your supermajority with a with a very good proposal and makes sense. So anyways, we will stay tuned, I will provide you with some more information that we get, I suspect Fran, if even the planning department, you must be getting some material on this. And again, it doesn't apply to all zoning changes or zoning amendments, there are certain criteria that that trigger that, but. I'm always concerned with unintended consequences, certainly we have, and a nine-member body, it's not. Unreasonable to expect a supermajority vote and unfortunately, so. Like I said, I'm not exactly in agreement with. Stay tuned, I'll get more information on it.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that update, Jerry. Do we have any further comments from board members? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Lockhart, do we have a second?
We don't want to leave, Mr. Chairman, no.
I take that's a second by Mr. Vichette? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye, chair vote yes, hearing any opposition, hearing none, we are adjourned, good night and thank you very much, everyone, appreciate it, have a great night. Happy same Patrick days, the week goes forward.
Good night.
Thank you, good night, everyone.